Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the first of three public meetings back to back to back. This meeting that you are currently tuned into is the Borough of Swissville Conditional Use Public Hearing for Power Each One Teach One Daycare Center. So I'd like to call to order. This is the time and place set forth for a public hearing concerning a requested conditional use by Power and Each One Teach One daycare as they have requested conditional use approval to operate a daycare center in a portion of the structure located at 7436 McClure Avenue. The applicant appeared before the Swissville Planning Commission on October 16th, 2025, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of this proposal. This public hearing has been properly advertised in the Borough newspaper of record and posted as required by the municipality's planning code. Who is present to represent the applicant?
I am the CEO of Power and our board president, Amber Battaglia is here, as well as some members of our team.
Thank you. So anyone who is going to be speaking on behalf of the applicant, if you could please state your name and address for the court reporter?
Rosa Verde Leoni Davis. Work address, Power 7436 McClure Avenue, Swissville 15218.
Amber, will you be speaking as well?
Oh, I might be, so I might as well. Amber Battaglia, I don't have the address memorized of Power, so I can give you my home address, 756 Pine Tree Road, Pittsburgh, PA 15243.
And I am Jody Sherman with Lab Eight Designs, the architect for the project, 55 South 17th Street, Pittsburgh, 15203.
Fill out your last name.
S C H U R M A N.
Are we good to continue?
Dr. Dominique Thornhill is on. She's from Each One Teach One.
Okay. Will she be speaking on behalf of? Okay, Dr. Dominic, if you could please state your name and address for the court reporter?
Name, Dominique Thornhill. Address, 5700 Bunker Hill Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15206.
And Tom Hardy is our consultant on this entire project, and he may speak, so maybe Tom. Go ahead.
Sure. So Tom Hardy, address 1240 Palo Alto Street, Pittsburgh, PA.
All right, well, if you could please explain what you are seeking from this council?
Sure, I'll start. I'm Rosa Davis, CEO of Power, and as many of you know, over the last three and a half years, we've been creating a Power Campus, which really consists of both our first program powerhouse, which is in the former St. Anselm convent, a 26-bed inpatient program for women struggling with addiction. And next to it, in the old St. Anselm school, is the new building, which houses all of our other programs, and together the two form the Power Campus. And so in the new building, we are proposing to have Each One Teach One open a childcare learning center that will serve the community as well as our clients and staff. And that will add to our continuum of care and serve the community of Swissville. And Dr. Thornhill can talk about the specific childcare services that they offer, and then Jody, our architect, can show you the designs. I think everyone knows, the council knows about Power, so I'm not gonna talk about our services if anyone has any questions, they can feel free to ask.
We will. After you make your presentation, there'll be some time for council members to ask questions.
Okay. Dr. Dom, you want to go next?
Yep, I'm Dr. Dom, Dominique Thornhill, from Each One Teach One Childcare and Learning Center. We've been operating in the city of Pittsburgh since 2020 with our first location in Wilkinsburg. Our second location is in Garfield on Penn Avenue, and we operate a summer camp location in Rankin through the Woodland Hills School District. Our mission has always been to provide quality childcare and educational enrichment to families in the city. So we are excited to join forces with Power to provide that same quality childcare to families of Swissville, as well as moms through the Power Organization. We are star four accredited through the state, and we are NACI recognized, and that's the national accreditation. We currently serve about 150 families through infants, toddlers, preschool, school age with before and after school, and then summer camp programming as well. All of our teachers, if they come to us with just experience, we assist them in enrolling in the Childcare Development Accreditation. That's the CDA program. So we've recently had seven teachers go through that accreditation and receive their childcare development associate. So we're excited for them to pair their experience with education. We use a curriculum called Frog Street, which has a huge social and emotional learning aspect, and we've used it for about a year now. August made a year, and we've seen some growth within our students. It was a shift for parents and teachers, but our students have loved it, and we're excited, again, to join forces with Power to serve the Swissville community.
Tom, do you want to add anything before Jody presents? No?
Okay, I'll take it from here. Sorry. Let me try that again. See that?
Yes.
Yeah.
So what I'd like to go over quickly is a couple of the architectural criteria for the conditional use application. What we're looking at here is a location map of the Power Campus. If you can see my cursor, this is the Power Campus. It is flanked on the north by McClure Avenue and on the south by Church Street. This dashed rectangle that's highlighting the Power Campus building shows where the Each One Teach One facility will be located. And the other area highlighted here is a parking lot, which is a shared parking lot between Power Campus and the Word of God Church. There's about 40 to 44 spaces in that lot, and they share it equally just based on demand. So the first thing we're looking at here, as we kind of enlarge the campus area, you'll see at the bottom of the screen where my cursor is now, is where the shared parking area is, and this is what we're proposing to be our primary drop-off area for the children. Once they're dropped off in the parking lot, they can access the main entry to the childcare facility on the sidewalk, which is already built, and pretty much just gain access through there. Parents have direct route from that parking area to the main entry. As I said, this is the primary area for drop-off if, for whatever reason, you know, a parent needs to stop on McClure. We have that option as well. There's a large loading area or parking area along McClure, which is parking on both sides of the street. So, you know, in the event that a parent, you know, determines that's where they want to park or, sorry, drop off their kid from, the sidewalk continues through, so there is still direct access. We will be focusing our efforts on, you know, parents using the parking area primarily. However, there are two options available. The next criteria is outdoor play area. For childcare facility in Swissville, we need 65 square feet of outdoor area per child. And what we are looking at from the programming that we did with Each One Teach One is they're probably looking at actually 50 children max at full enrollment. We had started with 55, so the highlighted area actually shows how we would place an outdoor play area for 55 children in the central courtyard of the Power Campus. And this would be fenced in area, you know, with a latchable access gate directly adjacent to the entry to the childcare space. It fits very well in between existing construction, which is this vertical sidewalk, the sidewalk going north-south on the page, and this diagonal sidewalk. This arched sidewalk here does not exist yet, specifically because this is still a sort of a construction site as we wait for the Each One Teach One tenant to come in, and we start construction on that. So this will be sized accordingly. We have the ability here for 55 children. If it ends up being 50, we can adjust, you know, if we need to, or just maintain a little larger play space for the kids. If enrollment, you know, changes, this kind of shows the flexibility we have with this outdoor play area. It's quite a large central courtyard, so we have the ability, you know, if they say we're going to have 27 or 30 kids for the first, you know, year or couple of years, we have the ability to kind of flex that outdoor play space accordingly. So it's all there and ready to go. We have some pictures. You can see the site right now. This will be where the player area is. You can see it's a construction staging area specifically for the Each One Teach One construction, once that occurs. When it gets built out, all this will be removed, and we'll start to create the outdoor area in this space. So just very quickly here. Oh, boy, sorry. This is a plan of the Each One Teach One facility. So as we mentioned, we enter, the main entrance is directly off of the outdoor player area and the central courtyard. You go down a set of steps to the lower level of the Power Campus building. There will be a single double-loaded corridor. It's actually a very wide corridor, so it'd be great to have like shelving and storage facilities and storage companies along it. The program itself is designed by Each One Teach One, and they really, you know, separate up into several classrooms ranging from infant and toddler, preschool and school-age children. Architecturally, you know, we have a couple offices that flank the space for security and just, you know, office space. And we also have the school age or preschool age toilets and toddler toilets, which will, you know, basically be used for each age range accordingly. So that's, that's pretty much it. So once again, yeah, we have the parking area for drop-off, and we have ample space in our central courtyard for a play area of various sizes. Oops, sorry. This computer's tricky. Right there.
Ms. Davis, are there any, is there anything, any other individuals who'll be contributed, contributing to the initial presentation? Sorry, was that, I wasn't sure if that was the answer. No, you're muted right now.
I think I would note on mute by now, huh? No, thank you, though.
Does anyone on council or the mayor have any questions of the applicant?
Well, I have one question. The daycare will be at the bottom level. There's only, when you walk in and you go down the stairs, will you still have your community space there?
Yes.
Is there going to be a restriction in terms of, I mean, I would assume people can't go during the day when the kids are there, right? So it would have to be after the kids are gone?
No, the, the space is being designed so that the childcare space has their own entrance, and there is some restriction, although they can access our part of the building, so we can continue to have meetings and the community can use our space anytime.
Excellent.
This is the time we would invite anyone in the public? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Ms. Schwartzbelder.
Sorry. I wasn't sure. I might have missed it. Is there a projected date that we're opening this? Do we have applications already? How's, how's that going?
The plan is to start construction in the next couple of months, and we hope to be ready to launch it by late spring, early summer of '26.
Awesome. And then, so that, when would like enrollment, like, when would you start accepting applications and things like that? I've got a few people that are looking.
Oh, good, Dominique. Dr. Dom, that's, that would be her area. She knows when she would have to start enrollment. I don't know, she can hear me.
Sorry, I'm trying to get off mute. So we typically start enrollment within the first, from the start date without like about two months out. So as soon as we see how construction's going, we apply for that certificate of occupancy, and then we apply with the state for a certificate of compliance. Once they say, hey, we'll be out within 45 days, then we do our now-enrolling, hit the community, libraries, schools, churches. So I would say within that 60-day mark, once we know when the state will come out and give us that certificate of compliance.
Awesome. Now, you have emergency drop-off?
We have some slots that are going to be reserved for Power parents as well, I'm sorry, Power employees and also moms, but that emergency drop-off is something that we'll have to take a look at because families would need to have an entire enrollment packet. So we can definitely do it, but we would need them to complete the enrollment packet at that time.
Is there anyone in the public who have any questions of the applicant? I don't know if we have anyone from the public on this meeting.
No one signed up for the, for this hearing to speak.
Got it. Okay. Does the applicant have anything additional to add?
No, I don't think so.
Any additional questions from council, the mayor, solicitor, borough staff? All right, hearing none. The public hearing concerning the Power Each One Teach One Conditional Use Request Proposal is closed. We will discuss this item later tonight in our agenda meeting, and you're welcome to watch on YouTube if you'd like. I will be closing this meeting at 6:40 or adjourning this meeting at 6:49 PM.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, so well, as I just said, we'll, we'll discuss it in our agenda meeting. A vote would be next Wednesday at our in-person meeting at Dixon on this, provided that we put it on the agenda for next week, which I don't see why we wouldn't. Yeah. And for the rest of us, we've got a meeting that we can't start till seven, so we've got about 11 minutes to feel free to eat a snack. Or something.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Bye, Rosie. I haven't seen you in a minute.
See you, Sean.
So we'll reconvene in 11 minutes. And Greg, I'm done.
Yes.
All right, have a great night.
Thanks, and no transcript on this one.
Understood.
Okay, thanks, Erin.
All right, if folks are back and want to get going, we're at seven o'clock. Once I see a quorum of us, I'm gonna call our meeting to order. C3. There's number four. All right, and I know, oh, there's another one. All right, so this is a special council meeting, which is called to order at seven o'clock PM. This was advertised as a special voting meeting. We're just voting on a couple of resolutions to submit grant applications. So I'm gonna go through roll call. Dr. Alfonso Wells?
Present.
Mr. Haynes, I don't believe is here with us yet. Mr. Mizer?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Present.
Ms. Stripling? I see Ms. Stripling. She's there. I'll give her the thumbs up.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Ms. Schwartzbelder? And Mayor Schwartzbelder?
Here.
We had no public comments submitted for this meeting. We will have another public comment session where someone is speaking for our agenda meeting. So we have
Can you reread it? I will give the motion.
So the motion underneath it, it's resolution, the one that says resolution, it's in blue, twenty-five dash twenty. You read that.
All right, one second.
I got it, I got it, I can do it. I move to approve Resolution twenty-five dash two O to submit a grant application to the redevelopment authority of Allegheny County Act 152 Demolition Program for the demolition of ten structures within Swissville Borough.
Second.
All right, that motion is on the table. Mr. Batshee, since we didn't have an agenda meeting for this, do you wanna give us a little background on it?
Yeah, what happened is I received this information the day of the council meeting last month, so we can't put it on the council meeting because we didn't discuss it at the agenda meeting. It wasn't advertised ahead of time. So this was advertised properly as a special meeting, so we can vote on these tonight. The deadline on these two, it's two different grant applications. One's Act 152 through the county, and one is a CDBG grant. And they're both due on Friday, so the grant applications are done. So all we have to do is pass the resolutions, and we could submit the two, the two grant applications. There are actually three resolutions, though. The first one that the motion was just made for is to actually submit the Act 152 grant. The Act 152 is there's a fifteen dollar fee on every deed recording, and that, that money is dedicated for demolitions in Allegheny County. So you have to apply to that fund annually. We've not had a lot of success, neither have our surrounding municipalities with this, with these funds, so hopefully this is our year. I think they might target areas, different areas of the county every year. Hopefully, this is the year they're targeting, targeting our area. So the three resolutions are twenty-five dash twenty is the one that we have a motion on, is to actually submit the Act 152 grant. The next resolution, twenty-five twenty-one, is to declare the ten properties, and I'll read what they are. They are nineteen fifteen Wayne Street, twenty-two forty-five Hawthorne Avenue, twenty-five forty-six South Braddock Avenue, seventy-five forty-two Short Street, twenty-one twenty Monongahela Avenue, twenty-one thirteen South Braddock Avenue, seventy-five twelve Calumet Street, seventy-two sixteen Agnes Street, seventy-two eighteen Agnes Street, and seventy-three eighteen Church Street. So the, we have to, the county requires us to pass a resolution that says at least three of the nine criteria these, these meet to be defined as slums and blight. So it's just, I know we don't wanna talk about our community being slums and blighted, but it's just the wording of the resolution. And then the third one is Resolution twenty-five twenty-two to submit an application to the Community Development Block Grant Program for funding to construct sixteen new ADA ramps on Monongahela Avenue. This will be between the Rankin border and Shorey Avenue, including the Shorey Avenue intersection. Some intersections need all four, some need one, some need none. There's also another grant we have pending with the county that the contract's about a year old, that they haven't, they haven't put it forth yet. That's going to do some of the other ones, like at Irvine Street and Florence. So this one picks up the rest of them that aren't already done. Utility company, the gas company, just did a bunch of them. So that was nice. We got some free work. We got new gas lines, and we got new ADA ramps. So those are the three resolutions we need to pass tonight. There's also a number of other resolutions in the agenda, but those will all take place next week because it's not a time consideration like these three are.
Thank you, Mr. Batshee. So currently, we have the motion on the table to approve Resolution twenty-five dash twenty. Is there any discussion or questions from elected officials regarding that motion?
I do believe these are all properties we've discussed at some point or another. And, and they've come up, so it'd be nice to be able to, if we're able to get the grant money, to be able to use that to get rid of blight, so to speak.
On the Monongahela property, seventy, what is it, two-one-two-zero?
Yes.
The corner house? I thought we were trying to knock down the other house.
Those, that, that one's in the grant application we submitted to the GDTF program last month.
Oh, so now we're also trying to knock down twenty-one twenty. This is a different list.
This is additional one, yeah, because the, the county's rules are, the county's real strict anymore about you cannot change what you put in. So if we put, so if we put them in, we have to do those houses. But if we had them under two different grant applications, then we couldn't, if we, if we got both of them, we can't change the second application. So that's why there's two separate lists of ten properties.
Sounds good.
Great. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the motion as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I ask who seconded that?
I did.
Thank you.
Motion carries. All right, let's move on to B, slums and blight resolution for ten dilapidated properties. This is Resolution twenty-five twenty-one. If someone wants to make that motion.
I move to, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Brett.
I'm sorry. I move to approve Resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-one, declaring that ten properties individually and collectively constitute blighted properties in the borough of Swissville as defined by the urban redevelopment law.
Second.
All right, that motion is on the table. Mr. Batshee read what those properties were a few moments ago. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor of approving the motion as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, C, resolution to approve the submission of a C, I was gonna say a CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Application to Fund the Replacement of Sixteen ADA Ramps on Monongahela Avenue. That says Resolution twenty-five twenty-two, oh, go ahead.
I move to approve Resolution twenty-five twenty-two to submit a grant application to the Allegheny County Community Development Block Grant Program for Funding to Replace Sixteen Handicapped Accessible Curb Cuts along Monongahela Avenue.
All right, I think Mr. Mizer slipped that one in. Any discussion on this motion?
Yeah, I've been looking around our neighborhood, and, and we do need these, these cuts for wheelchairs. And, and just so that people who, you know, are differently abled and have mobility issues can, you know, get down off the curb in an easier fashion. So I'm, I'm so glad that we have the opportunity to submit a grant like this, so that we can improve those areas, so that people with limited mobility are still able to enjoy the neighborhood.
And get around safely as well.
Greg, I assume, so these are gonna go like, is this taking over all of the Monongahela? Is it running in conjunction with the, what we're doing with the Main Street Matters Grant?
The Main Street. The Main Street Matters Grant is a planning grant. That's just for, to study the, study the corridor, determine what needs done. We do have the Streetscape Grant, which that does include, that includes a couple curbs. Most of the ones, though, for the, that were included in the Streetscape Grant were done by People's Gas. So, but this will work concurrently with the Streetscape Grant, another CDBG grant we have, and this one to do all, then all the ones on, in addition to all the ones that are already completed. Then everything between the Rankin border and Shorey Avenue, including the corner of Shorey and Monongahela, will be complete.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, let's vote. All in favor of approving the motion as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and that is our business for that meeting. So if I could entertain a motion to adjourn the special meeting at seven-ten PM.
Motion to adjourn the special meeting at seven-ten PM.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and that is our business for that meeting. So if I could entertain a motion to adjourn the special meeting at seven-ten PM.
Motion to adjourn the special meeting at seven-ten PM.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting number two concluded. All right, so we are in the, the meeting, the, the time between the times of the meetings. Ms. Ansel, if you wanna let our public commenter in, I'm going to call our agenda, our agenda meeting to order at seven-ten PM, and I'm gonna go through our roll call. So roll call is Dr. Alfonso Wells.
Present.
Mr. Haynes, not here yet. Mr. Mizer.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Present.
Ms. Stribling.
Present.
Ms. Swartzwelder.
Here.
And Mayor Swartzwelder.
Here.
All right, everyone is roll called in. Public comment, we have, I believe it's Ms. Bush, Julie Bush.
Yes, I'm here.
Three minutes, you can, the floor is yours. You can share your comment with the elected officials.
Okay, I live at twenty-one sixteen South Braddock Avenue, apartment seven. It's a property that's owned by Matrix Properties. I have been living here for approximately a year and some months now. The problem I'm having is my landlord wants to move his dumpster. I don't know what the dispute he's having with the dumpster, but the plan that he's using with this dumpster now is he wants to put it fifty feet in front of my window. He's telling me that he wants to put a little private fence with a wall so that it could keep me from looking at the garbage, but I have to live with the smell of the garbage. I live on the corner part of the building that faces, I guess Swissville's old municipal buildings parking lot. As I got noticed that they said that y'all are allowing them to use that portion of the parking lot, so he can have access to this dumpster. My concern is, why do I have to live with garbage now in front of my window? Garbage that's gonna create vermin, roaches that we already have. Not only that, I will not be able to open up my windows because the dumpster sits smack dab in my living room window on the other side of the parking lots. My also concern is with the dumpster, the garbage being picked up, the overflow of the garbage, which is gonna go into the parking lot, which is also gonna be again in front of my living room window. And nobody is giving me nothing. They, they, they came and started digging it up this afternoon and telling me they're gonna put a pallet there to hold the dumpster. I don't have the liberty to just pick up and move. I'm on section eight. Just can't pick up and go, but something needs to be done about this because I shouldn't have to live with a dumpster fifty feet in front of my window and my back door. And also the traffic of people from thirteen apartments gonna come now, coming past my bedroom windows, my living room windows, to dump their garbage that's fifty feet away from my window. I'm not understanding, and nobody is giving me another recourse about how this can be alleviated. Okay, that's a stench that I have to live with. Thank you. That's all I needed to say. I don't know what, whatever else he can do, or how y'all can help rectify this situation, but I can't live with a dumpster in front of my back door, and I wish I could. It was light enough so that y'all could see it in the back. And not only that, it's gonna put me in a blind spot. From people coming from the parking lot, a wall in front of my window, I will not be able to see who's by the dumpster, was by the dumpster when I come out of my back door to even take the garbage out. So it has to be a better resolution to about where he needs to put his dumpster. Cause I like my landlord. They're good people. They service me well. But this with this garbage, I can't do this. I can't, and I got asthma and COPD. I can't do this. And I'm the basement apartment. Okay, it's the basement apartment, and already, if you go to my windows, you could step into my windows from the outside.
Mrs. Bush, thank you for your comments. Sorry that you were dealing with that situation. I, just to kind of recap for folks that are tracking with this, the, the property that she lives in is the one that we had approved. I, I don't remember the exact language. It was some type of, it wasn't a lean, no, that's definitely the wrong language. Mr. McTirren, what was the, the, the language we used?
A license.
A license, thank you. Because where the dumpster had previously been with a new neighbor that had moved into another house had requested that move, and so this was for access of garbage collection. So I'm going to invite Mr. Batshee, or Mr. Wilhelm, or Mr. De Ambrosia, whoever feels like it is most appropriate to speak to this. I, I, I think that, I don't know that there's anything that we have authority over, per se, but if you can, you know, speak to the, the situation and, and see if there, if you have any brainstorms in terms of alleviation for Ms. Bush, I'd appreciate it. So Ms. Bush, again, thank you for your comments, and I, I will invite some staff members to, to speak on that a little bit later during their reports.
Thank you very much, and everybody have a good evening.
Thank you, you as well.
You as well.
Have a.
Okay, so as we continue our agenda, if we can, okay, so item nine A, discuss appointing members to the Transportation Advisory Committee.
Last month, we did interviews of eight candidates for the Transportation Advisory Committee. We have seven spots available for four, three, two, and one-year terms, since this is a new organization. Two, four-year terms, two, three-year terms, two, two-year terms, and a one-year term. Now, as I had sent, wrote in the memo I sent to you, basically what I did was I just, I put the terms so that they started now and go to the end of twenty-six for the one-year term, so nobody has to be reappointed in two months. So all the terms would be a year and two months, two years and two months, et cetera. But we have the eight candidates, I sent, listed the names. I can also give you some background information and also remind you what they, you know, there's a couple that asked for the four-year term. There are others that said they prefer medium length or shorter term. So before next Wednesday, I'll send you that information that they're seeking. So there will be seven separate motions on the agenda. So the next week's agenda is going to look super long, but it's really just, you know, seven separate motions to appoint people. So I will give you some recommendations on appointments. I, there's no, no hard feelings if you, if you take them, or you, or you don't take them. Totally up to you what you do, but if you're looking for some recommendations, I'll provide them to you based upon the conversations that we're having with those individuals. And I've had some offline conversations with a few of them, too. So this is some information I may have heard that you didn't.
Any questions? Discussion from council?
It's Danine. Hey, I just have one question. Is it possible to have an alternate that is not appointed to the board, but we can refer to them if somebody were to leave the board, or they could be involved in the meetings without having a vote?
There was no, there was no provision for that in the ordinance that we passed, so we did pass an ordinance establishing the board. But anybody, you know, anybody could come to the meetings, you know, at any time and not have a vote, you know, they could participate in the meetings. They're not gonna be closed meetings, so if that, because there will be one person excluded. If they still want to, if they still wanna be involved, they could still come and debate and discuss things with, with the board. And then if somebody, somebody does resign or can't serve, that person may, would be a natural, natural person to, to move up into that, into a position.
Perfect.
All right, Mr. Batshee, if you can put, you know, those, those seven motions with blanks for the names for next week's agenda.
Yep.
Nine B, discuss awarding a contract for the replacement of the roof at the Swissville Food Pantry.
We talked about this last month, and we tabled it because there was no state budget in place, and we don't have a way of getting reimbursed. We'll see what happens by next week. Now, there is some, some things that changed that I found out in the LSA program. This is a local share account grant, and the local share account will pay the contractor directly now. Now, I'm waiting for confirmation from my grant person. Mr. Ziskow sent me some information. He received another grant that stated that. So I just wanted, straight from, you know, my grant manager. But if they're gonna write checks directly now, that, that alleviates a burden on us and a concern. However, the contractor may be reluctant to start until he knows there's a state budget in place, because he knows he won't get paid, won't get paid. So we can award the contract, but it just, there may So we can award the contract, um but it just, there may be a delay in the start and, you know, because of that reluctance, which I totally understand.
Any other discussion? All right, we'll put it on the agenda for next week with the hope that maybe there's a budget or we have confirmation that. Uh we wouldn't have to front the money uh and get reimbursed and that would give the opportunity to still get the work done and wait for the. Hopefully, by the time the work would be done, this, the budget is, I would hope, is is in place. All right, let's move on to nine C, discuss awarding a contract for the replacement of the sidewalks at the Wilkins School Community Center.
It's the same thing, um we 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 tabled it last month because of lack of state budget, same funding source and local share account. Um and just to add one thing is, you know, there is an election on Tuesday with some senators up for seats up for grabs. So I'm thinking maybe there could be some movement on the budget by by Tuesday, I hope. Um but just, you know, we'll wait and see. Um and same thing, if we get that confirmation from the state, I'm not, I'm not afraid to award it, but the contractor, once again, may wait, may want to wait. And I I don't think, you know, there's a certain number of days we give them in the contract to complete, but I don't think we can hold them to that with this situation.
Now, Mr. Bachi, just for clarification, uh this is for sidewalks, does this also include the EV chargers that we had talked about putting there? Or is that a separate, will that be a separate bid?
This includes the conduit for the the conduit underside, the sidewalks for the EV chargers. We've been working with Duquesne Light on this and uh the Duquesne Light has funds to fund the uh installation of the chargers. And the electric panels and such, so there'll be no cost, it won't have to come out of the grant.
Perfect, so this is just creating the, this is part of creating the infrastructure for those EV chargers, okay, thank you. Any other conversation or discussion? Nine D, discuss power request for a conditional use to operate a daycare center.
Um as you're aware, Power just had a public hearing on this uh prior to this meeting. Um the the process when you apply for a condition to use to operate something like this, is you go to the planning commission first. Uh they went to the planning commission on October sixteenth. The planning commission has made a recommendation to council to oh to um approve this um daycare, requested daycare center. They meet the conditions in the of the conditional use in the ordinance. In the fact that they have the required play area, the outdoor play area, and they also have uh adequate off street parking and loading for the students. Um that will be coming to the facility. Um the um. The 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 public hearing was held, which is the next component, and then council could take a vote. And now, anytime from the next ninety days, if you don't take the vote in ninety days, it's an automatic approval in their favor. So, but I, you know, so I don't see a reason not to put it on the agenda for next week unless anybody has any objections.
I think it'll be great for the community, um no objections here, I think we can go ahead and put it on, and put the last one on too. I guess that we never specifically uh explicitly articulated that, but.
I think it's also a very holistic uh part of the program. Um it it helps you, it helps your, helps out with the children. And it'd be nice to have the little voices and laughter of children at in that area again. Um you know, it was a school a little bit ago, it wasn't that long ago, and you could hear children. Um so it'd be nice to have that element back, children always make a neighborhood feel like it's growing.
Yes, and I think it would be definitely great to benefit if you do have young children and you work there to just bring your kids right to work, that would be awesome.
All right, we'll put that on the agenda. Uh let's move on to nine E, discuss animal control contract.
We discussed this last month, uh and I think several months actually. Um the the animal control contract with Sable has expired. And we had sent an RFP out for proposals um to three companies, the three we're aware of, which are Sable Kennel. Who Rescued Who and Hoffman Kennels. Hoffman Kennels chose not to bid on it. Uh we received proposals from Who Rescued Who and Sable. I've given you the proposed contracts for both of them and also a a summary of the the costs. Right now, we're on track to spend about twenty nine hundred twenty dollars for animal control services this year. Under the new Sable proposal with the same amount of service in twenty twenty six, it will cost us thirty six hundred fifty dollars. And Who Rescued Who for the same service will cost us forty nine hundred dollars. Who Rescued Who also has, the it seems like they're um. They have less availability after four PM than Sable does. We've been using Sable uh about seven years, I believe, seven, eight years. Used to be camo kennels and Sable uh Sable purchased camo and took them over. Um so they uh they have, they have serviced us. I talked to Chief Watson and some of the other officers and uh they said, you know, they don't have any complaints with them when they, when they call, they come. Uh and the borough office has received no complaints uh concerning Sable's uh services.
So any discussion, I know this is something, I know Mr. Haynes isn't here tonight, I know he's brought it up a few times, that he was not pleased with Sable, that he had had some complaints that came to him. But as Mr. Bachi had asked him, uh you know, said, hey, the have them contact the borough uh to to this point in time, no one has contacted the borough to file a complaint against Sable. Um and you know, you see the the cost difference uh between the two, so I don't know if folks have thoughts.
I was gonna say, I think sticking with uh Sable is just the, I mean. It's not only the cheaper option, but also I feel like it makes more sense with their availability and everything. Um if we had people coming forward to complain about them, I think it would be a different discussion, but. Uh with no, like, real information. Um I don't think that it really makes sense to spend the extra money um on a different service that we know nothing about.
Um I I thought, I I thought it was interesting just looking at the contracts, it was uh something I had not been aware of. Is that, you know, if the if the if the animal is unlicensed, it only has forty eight hours before it is either placed. Or erased, um I didn't know that, which which is, I mean, it's interesting, because it does um make you realize when you're calling. Either you're gonna take care of that animal or you're gonna, you know, maybe release it to another shelter, that's. That's something people should probably be aware of. Uh um I was definitely not aware of that, but once again, I think uh Ms. Schwartz-Welder uh made a good point in terms of the cost. I know we were looking at that third place also, but I don't see um an estimate that, an estimate from the third place that would make it in the running here, so.
Well, they they chose not to give a bid for it.
Ah, oh, okay, well, they chose not to, I guess, so. Uh then that makes it a little easier, I guess.
I mean, I'll add, oh, go ahead.
I asked Sarah to reach out to the third one um last month. Uh you asked them to reach out to all three because we actually hadn't received anything before the deadline. And uh and I asked, and Sarah reached out to them and uh Hoffman said they were never not going to bid, so.
I mean, this is a similar situation where it's, nothing has gone to the borough specifically, but I will say that I did receive in the past two months. Uh two email, two separate emails from two different residents, both saying that they were very pleased with Sable. So I guess that's kind of on the same level of hearsay as the complaints, um but that is there, there are some chatter there. I will say, I'll just speak out of um my own experience, is uh we adopted a dog from Sable, probably about three months ago. Uh a little over three months ago, uh she is a handful, but that has nothing to do with Sable, she's just a handful. Uh it was, it was a good experience, um I mean, I think it's. You know, we initially, after the forty eight hour holding period, went and had a a visit with the dogs, uh with the dog, with our current dog to see if they got along. Um you know, our desire was to wait until the 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 new pup was spayed before we brought her home. Um but they really insisted that it was their press uh preference to, you know. Get her out of the, get her out of here, you can bring her back to, you know, have her spade whenever, whenever her appointment is. Um and I think it's just because they are, they're hurting, they're always hurting on space. Uh I, you know, it's talking to Dawn, her desire is not ever to have to euthanize a dog. Um but sometimes they they do come up if if no one claims or wants the dogs. Space is is limited. Um I will say one other person, because I had been doing some research over a few months, I have a a good friend of mine whose uh wife used to work with uh some of the Animal Rescue League. Folks, and I asked if she had any opinions of Sable, and again, it was uh you can. Her her perspective of Sable was that the that Dawn, again, really, really cares about the dogs, um which I think. There are certain reviews that you can see about Sable's interactions with the public, um but she she does care about the dogs. And um so I I am in agreement with, uh I just want to share a little bit of my own personal experience, and I also am in support of maintaining Sable's contract.
I would just say that one resident did approach me and uh they are a, they're, I don't know, they are rescue able. They they like rescuing animals and all that kind of stuff, and so they seem to be familiar with it and they highly praised uh Sable. And said that it was, you know, they wanted us to uh maintain the kind, I mean, just one resident, but. You know, no one ever really talks to me otherwise, but someone actually came up to me and brought it up, so um I just want to, you know, make that clear.
So, Mr. Bachi, what I'm hearing is, let's um put on the agenda for next week, Sable, Sable contract. Um again, it's not a shoo-in, people could vote against it and could make a separate motion to put the other, but as of now, um let's go forward as if that's the direction we're heading. Sound good?
Yep.
All right, we'll keep on moving, uh this is item nine F, discuss adoption of the twenty twenty one International Property Maintenance Code and the twenty twenty one International Fire Code.
So we did this in July, um we adopted them by, we adopted the the both of them. Um but when I wrote the agenda, I did not write it properly and it didn't reference an ordinance. Um so I'm asking you to re-adopt these. Uh we will re-adopt them as ordinance twenty five dash twelve and twenty five dash thirteen. Um credit to Mike Volpe for asking, like, what ordinance adopted this, he was working on something, he needed the ordinance number, and I'm like, I don't know. Um I look, because when I looked at the agenda, I'm like, well, that was wrong. So, Mr. McTiernan, it was the month Mr. McTiernan was on vacation and uh we uh we missed it. So I'm asking that would, this would be two separate motions, one to adopt the International Property Maintenance Code and the international, one for the International Fire Code. They're separate ordinances, um and they um uh we have to move up to the to the next code. Because the the state has adopted the next code series, which right now they've adopted twenty twenty one, they're always three to five years behind. Uh what the actual, you know, there's a twenty twenty four code out there right now, but they've just adopted the twenty twenty one code.
So the lesson is, Mr. McTiernan, you're not allowed to go on vacation, sorry, just just kidding. All right, uh any discussion on this, we've already done this, so um anyone have anything to say? All right, let's go ahead and add those uh onto the, I assume the ordinance has already been in the process of being advertised to clear.
It's already, they've both been advertised and uh the ordinance is drafted, everybody has a copy of them, um so they're ready for adoption.
Okay, we'll add that to the agenda, both of those for next week. Item nine G, discuss joining the Turtle Creek Valley Council of Governments Property Maintenance Appeals Board.
So we currently participate in the Turtle Creek Valley Council of Governments Uniform Construction Code Appeals Board. And that is for all new construction, new non-commercial construction. We al- we already take, we already participate in that. And and I take it back, it's all new construction, that does, it takes in commercial too, it's everything but accessibility, so the handicap issues. That those have to go before the state, um but the, everything else would go before that board. If um if people were challenging the interpretation of the code official. Uh or they are asking for variance from any of those items in the building code. The uh they have established a property maintenance code of board code of appeals. Um Chief Wilhelm has um suggested that we um join that also. Because then we don't have to staff the the maintenance, the property maintenance appeals board. Um when you have these boards, they like you to have uh people like architects, engineers, plumbers, electricians. Contractors, building code officials who live in your community on that, sometimes that's hard to staff, that's why we went with the UCC Appeals Board. Uh when we joined that a couple of years ago, now we're recommending that we join this property maintenance, uh the joint property maintenance. And that would require two things, it required an ordinance and then the approval of an internet intergovernmental cooperation agreement. So there'd be two instruments on the agenda if you wish to do this.
Any discussion? I mean, I think it's a no-brainer, it's very minimal cost to us, it seems to be a, you know, case by case scenario that we are billed for them. Uh sharing a little bit of advertising costs, um and yeah, we don't have to worry about staffing the technical trades uh in this way. Add them to the agenda. Oop, wrong one, all right, let's move on to nine H, discuss a change order for the borough building.
Okay, first one, um this was found, it's on the site, it's not, it's not in the building itself, but it's on the site. There's an existing storm sewer that ties into a uh storm pipe. Uh behind the building where the alley used to go off of uh it, when you come in off Ardmore Street, there's an existing inlet that we replaced. And then there ties into Ardmore Street. Um what happened there is when the, when the engineer, LSSC. Uh looked in the existing inlet, there's a ten inch pipe in inside the inlet, there's a ten inch pipe at the other end, but there's an eight inch pipe in between. So at some point, someone in their infinite wisdom replaced that pipe, but on, obviously, probably didn't have the correct size pipe available. So they just stuck in whatever they had. So the ten inch, the eight inch pipe is not adequately sized to carry the flows that will be generated according to the stormwater calculations. So that needs to be up upsized to a ten inch pipe. Uh it's an eighteen thousand five hundred sixty seven, it's not to exceed eighteen thousand five hundred sixty seven dollars. Will be done on a time and materials basis. And one of LSSC's um associates will be there, keeping track of the time, the materials, the number of people on the job. Um so it could be less, um but it will not exceed eighteen thousand five hundred sixty sixty seven dollars for that work. Um the, I have already given them the go-ahead to do this work because we have to keep the project moving. Um we need to ratify the change order um because the R cap. The R cap guidelines for our R cap, the two and a half million dollar grant. Require the paper trail of council of the, you know, of it being approved and then council ratifying the change order. And uh in a public meeting and having minutes for that.
Thank you, Mr. Bachi, any questions or discussion from council?
I'm good with this, I'm just gonna speak into existence that this will be our only change order, I hope.
Yeah, definitely not something you anticipate, and I could see why, it's not like they could have known, uh relatively speaking. And I hope, once again, knocking on some wood over here, uh that uh we can escape. These types of unexpected things, but I will say that when we were planning for this, uh Mr. Bachi did uh make sure that there was a little, a little give somewhere. Um that would uh account for some of this unexpectedness.
Yeah, to to that point, Mr. Bachi, how much did we have allo- or roughly allocated for change orders?
Well, in the budget, we didn't have anything allocated for change orders because the budget's very tight, but there's about three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars that can be used for change orders, furnishings. Um you know, all the, all the soft costs, um so the bottom line is, the more change orders, the cheaper the furniture.
Okay.
Or the less furniture that will, over a series of years.
Yes.
Add in.
And council is all volunteering to put together the IKEA furniture if we get to that.
Oh, I love doing that stuff. All right, go ahead and add that ratification to the agenda for next week. Uh we'll move on to nine I, discuss resolutions to submit grant applications to the local share account or LSA program.
So here we are, back to the LSA program and the lack of state budget again. We submitted several applications to the LSA program last year. Um for phase two of Wilkins School Community Center, phase two of the food pantry renovation and for some vehicles and equipment. Um the vehicles and equipment, the main thing in that was the ref- the refurbishment of the ladder truck at the fire department. That was, I've told, I was told was cut from that because they consider that maintenance and they don't pay for maintenance. This is a total refurbishment of the truck to the tune of almost three hundred thousand dollars to extend the life, you know, another ten years. Um but they consider that everyday operational maintenance, so. So what's in that grant right now is a uh a car for the, for Mark Lukak to drive, the public service specialist to do ticketing, code enforcement. And also a skid steer for the, for the Public Works Department. So since we, since there's no state budget in place, they will not, they will not announce any grant awards. Um and the next round of applications are due at the end of November, however, next week is our last meeting before the grant applications are due. So we need to approve the resolutions. Um so what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask you to approve a resolution for all three of the ones that we did last year. As well as the one that, uh as well as a new one for road reconstruction, paving and um active transportation plan implementation. So in the active transportation plan, there made a lot of recommendations where we could make things more pedestrian-friendly, more bicyclist-friendly. And there, there's a number of things we can do there. And I'm going to go through the, you know, what the top part, the high priorities, add those into the grant application. We did have a list of streets to pave that we, in our last paving project in 2023, that we, you know, we had about 10 more streets on there that we didn't get to. And those were, I think the next one on the list from what we finished was Lloyd. Lloyd was on there. Part of River View, part of Delaware. There's a bunch. I'll have it for you for next week. We'll have a good list of what you're voting on. Because we're, we're going to come up with about $750,000 worth of, worth of projects to put into this grant. But if we don't have a budget by November 30th, I'm resubmitting all the grants. Because I don't know what we're getting. So, you know, what we're, if, what if any we're getting this year. So if we don't get one this year, I don't want to miss another year because it'll be two years down the road before we can reapply. So I'll be submitting a minimum of four if that's the case. If we don't get the one for the vehicles and the equipment, I'm going to, I've talked to Jordan and and Chief Wilhelm about, you know, some other things to put into that, into that grant. And we came up with some, you know, like a alley truck for garbage, which is basically a small truck with a compactor for to get into alleys and tight spaces. A side-by-side or a quad with a snow plow and the solder on it to do sidewalks, things that we normally couldn't fund out of the budget, but you know, would be good to have because we could be a lot more productive with stuff like that. So that's, those will be added into that grant if we don't get it or if we don't hear from them. But once again, their lack of actions creating a lot more work for us to ensure that this community gets what it needs. But yeah, so there'll be four separate resolutions, four separate agenda items for resolutions for next week, for resolutions 23, 24, 25, and 26.
Any questions? Discussion?
I just want to say that I appreciate the proactiveness of, you know, going through this and having next steps so that we're kind of not falling, falling behind and we can take advantage of whatever funds we are able to acquire. So. Great job, Greg.
Thank you.
Agreed. Let's throw that on the, those four on the agenda for next week. All right, nine J, discuss the 2026 TAN loan.
So I talked first. I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to define TAN, tax anticipation note.
So I talked to First Column Wealth last week about getting a proposal for a TAN loan for 2026. Usually I bring this to you in December, but the last couple of years, they've been slow to fund it. Just because the, you know, there's a backlog. You have to have these loans approved by DCD. There gets to be a backlog there. You know, we submit them, Mr. McTiernan's office submits them DCD. Then there's an advertisement required. And I just wanted to be, get this done a little sooner so we could have access to the funds around January 1st. Last year, they didn't fund it until February 14th. This year, we will have a payment due to the regional police department of about a quarter million dollars on January 15th, which we typically don't spend a quarter million dollars on police at that time of year. So I am, I am suggesting that we go with a larger tax anticipation note this year of a million dollars because we'll have to give a half a million dollars to the police department before our funds, our revenues start coming in a little better in March. So we typically borrow $600,000. We, but we've done that for the best I can see, 14 years. It's $600,000 and things have, you know, costs have gone up quite a bit. So the the TAN loan, I did the math on it. We are able to borrow that amount because there's a formula based on your, on your general fund budget of how much you're allowed to borrow. We can actually borrow up to $1.7 million as a TAN loan if necessary. I don't want to do that, but I think a million dollars is necessary right now because of the police. Hopefully, maybe next year in '27, we could bring that down a little bit. But because this is a new police department and they have no funds, you know, we have to give them the full payment in, in January. In the future, we may have the option of working with them to say, hey, well, you know, we'll give you more in March or whatever, based upon their, their needs and their, their budget. But we don't have that option this year. But I don't have the proposal from them yet. Mr. Abraham didn't get it to me. So I, you know, I had called him yesterday and he said, I'll get it, I'll get it, I'll get it. And I didn't get it. So. But hopefully I have it by Friday. I'll get it out to everybody and you can see what the interest rate is. I expect it to be 5%, 5.2, something like that. Last year, we were high, like five, six, something like that, but rates have dropped. And that may be why he's waiting because the Fed meets tomorrow and they're supposed to, they are supposed to lower rates. So he may be waiting on that to see what the rate comes in at, to give us a little better, something a little more favorable.
Any questions? I think my only request, since we're borrowing, I mean, not quite double of what we've typically borrowed, is to just try to be not aggressive, but you know, sometimes we, we will pay the bulk of that off at the end when we've already accrued the maximum amount of interest. So if there are times where things are good, that we can pay off even a little bit at a time early. That's, I don't know, that's the way I work, trying to keep that interest payment as low as possible. But, but I agree. I think this is something we need to do.
And I want, I want to talk to Dion about that, you know, setting up some kind of schedule for, for monthly payments on this, you know, when, when we get, you know, maybe whatever comes in, if we set it as a percentage of it. You know, if, when certain amount of money comes in, we say a percentage of it goes to the TAN and we just pay off a chunk every month. It may, it may vary from month to month based on cash flow. At the time, we have the garbage fee coming in and then when the, then after April 15th, when we have more earned income tax and then when the property tax comes in. So. And then have a few hundred thousand left at the end of the year that we pay off.
Yeah, I think, and that just, that'll save us. I mean, you can save maybe $10,000 on interest doing it that way. So. Perfect. Any other questions? We'll, we'll put that on the agenda and move forward with that. Nine K, discuss two vacant property recovery program applications.
We received two applications for VPRP. They are adjacent to, they are at 2206 Lehigh Street and 2246 Manor Avenue. The neighbors next door to both of them are interested in purchasing them. They have applied through the county. The county has vetted everything and they've sent the applications to us. They need us to authorize a resolution for both of those. You know, we've, we do this regularly as people request it. And this is, you know, this is a good thing. There's nothing we can lose here because it goes back on the tax rolls and we also don't have to maintain them anymore.
Any questions?
I just want to say, I think this is great. I love seeing people using this program and I hope that we can find more people to participate. I, from my understanding, it does not have to be an adjacent property. They've, I believe they've changed the rules that you can now adopt property that does not abut your own. Which may be of interest to some people. I think the more lots that we can get off of our shoulders is better. So. Keep encouraging that.
Agreed.
All right, we'll add those to the agenda for next week as well. And that brings us to the close of our normal business. We're going to move to our departmental reports. So we'll start with the police. Chief Watson.
Good evening, everyone. The only thing I have for tonight is I, I've been talking about this accreditation process for over a year. We had our mock assessment or our practice assessment, which was a success. We had a few things we had to adjust and that should all be done by tomorrow. And our final inspection should be November 21st and 22nd. In which case we will hopefully follow through and be accredited by January of next year at the, at the PIAAC meeting, whichever receives accreditation. So. It's been a lot of work, but I think it makes us a better police department and, and after November, hopefully come back with a big success for us. So.
Thank you, Chief. I know that that has been a number of years you've been talking about this and moving forward with this. And so I'm sure it feels good to be, kind of have that light at the end of the tunnel feeling on this.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll be very happy when it's over.
Yeah.
But it's an ongoing process. I mean, just because we get the status that you have to do things to maintain it on a basis. So.
Sure.
Not, you know, the end of it, but it, I think it's a major accomplishment for our agency and it will carry over to the regional department. The only thing that would happen is like when a new building is constructed, it'd have to come out and look at the building to make sure it meets the standards, which won't be an issue at all. So.
I was going to say, if we can get Evan Street to meet the standards, then I'm sure we can get the new building to meet the standards.
Yes, sir.
Any, any questions for, or comments for chief? All right. Thank you, Chief Watson. Let's move on to fire. Chief Wilhelm.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have anything to add to the agenda. Everything, we're just plugging along, trying to keep up with everything.
Wonderful. Thank you. You do have, I guess we'll have a meeting before the next fish fry. Yes. So we can announce it next week.
Well, yeah, it's what, November?
Seven.
Is that what it is? November 7th? Yeah.
That's Friday.
That's Friday, November 7th. Yeah. Yeah, I try to forget.
You can join us for that. Chief Wilhelm, while, you know, we're, we're doing this, you know, we had the resident who gave the public comment regarding the dumpster. To your knowledge, is there any, any code issues that would prevent the landlord from, or anything, anything that the code, that according to the code that the landlord needs to keep in mind as he is constructing this pallet and whatnot for the dumpster?
Well, I mean, it, it just has to be maintained and the trash needs to be, you know, kept orderly and not scattered about. There are no restrictions in the code other than it has to be in proper containers and potentially fenced in, depending on the location and where it is. Again, like the, the tenant had said, Matrix Property Management really is, is one of our really good landlords. They generally really take care of their properties well and we really don't have many issues with them. So I'm sure that they'll try to maintain it as best they can. I mean, the dumpster is similarly, was previously similarly situated behind the building next to the one that the lady lives in. So it's just a matter of moving it. And there's really no other option as, as was presented earlier other than to go to individual cans, which they then have to be in between the buildings, which would be much, much worse. So I don't know. There, there's no code violation for the location or the placement. Obviously, we'll monitor it and if there's issues, we'll, we'll, we'll address those as they come up.
Yeah. Thank you, Chief Wilhelm. That's, that's what I thought. I feel bad for her. I, I mean, no one wants to have that 50 feet from your window. But they also need to receptacle to collect trash. And I think that that's, she really probably just needs to talk to her landlord. I don't know that we have any particular authority over it if he is doing things the way that he's supposed to be doing. So.
Yeah, I believe that you're correct in that assessment.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Let's, anyone else have any questions for Chief Wilhelm? All right, we'll move on to Public Works. Mr. Dan Brojo.
Good evening. Just a couple of quick items. Street sweeping will end officially this Friday, which is October 31st. Next week, which will be November 3rd, Monday, the leaf collection will begin. That will continue through December 5th, which is a Friday. Weather providing will be out every day. The schedule will, will mirror the street sweeping schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Dan Brojo. Any questions for him?
Am I correct that ticketing does not occur for leaf collection? Residents are recommended to their car if there are leaves, but is, there is no ticketing, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, you're correct in that.
Yeah, so you can leave your car. It's best if you move it, but you can leave your car and it will collect the leaves from between your car. But if you want to get a good collection of the leaves and cleaned up really nicely, don't have your car in the way.
Yeah, and just to add to that, the, the leaf collection machine is very large and you can't pivot in between cars. It has to stay. Unless there's an opening, four or five cars, it's got to stay in the, in the middle of the roadway. So if it can't reach, I mean, they'll do the best they can. But I mean, if the cars are close to it, they may be missed. And they can't come back because of the volume of leaves. So if you want the leaves, if you want the leaves collected, please move your cars away from the leaf pile so that they can get the truck as close as they can and collect all the leaves.
And just leaves, no plastic, no other pieces of garbage up in there. Don't be breaking our trucks.
Or even no grass clippings.
Just leaves. No grass clippings, no branches, you know, leaves.
Your potted plants that are dead, you can't dump them in the pile. Throw them in the trash bag and put them out with your trash.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Dan Brojo. Move on to the borough manager, Mr. Baty.
Three quick things, or two quick things. The garbage amnesty program is your last chance, two days. You have Thursday and Friday to make payment. You can make it by calling Keystone. Everyone that had the delinquencies got a letter. And unfortunately, it hasn't been as successful as I had hoped for. Maybe about $30,000 to $35,000 was collected from the, for, you know, without penalty. So people have two more days. I know some people do wait till the last minute. I talked to a few in the last couple of days and they're hoping to make their payments this week. But it's, you know, Friday is the deadline. Friday, Friday, close the business, four o'clock with Keystone. Monday, all the, all the penalties go back on and there will be, and they, and they will be back to collecting it as normal, whether it's through the magistrate, through letters, fines, whatever. So now's a good time to pay it for the next two days. And the last thing, I got this on Monday from the library, from the Swissville Library. They are going to apply for a Keystone Library Grant again. But they are not an eligible applicant. Only, only the burrows are, minus pallets are. So they've asked us to apply on their behalf. This will be the second time they apply for this funding. They did not receive it last year, so they're reapplying. I think it's for $750,000 to match their R cap grant and other, you know, to, to fund or help fund their project. So they've asked that we apply for them, but they need us to pass a resolution to do so. So I will get that. We did this in, we did this previously a couple of years ago for them. I will get you a copy of the resolution. I've received it, yes, received the resolution yesterday. But I'll get it changed with the dates and, you know, and the, you know, whatever else needs changed and updated and get it out to you before next week. So if we could add, if you'd be amenable to adding that to the agenda, that would be, that would be helpful to them.
Unless I hear any reason not to, yeah, please do add it to the agenda. We are all big supporters of the library. And if we can be their representative to apply for this money, let's do it.
And that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Baty? All right, we'll keep moving on. You know, I, I missed the last couple of meetings, so I've got a few things for my report. So first is executive session. We had an executive session on October 20th to speak about matters of personnel. So that was between our last two meetings. I wanted to announce that. We also will be having an executive session following this meeting to discuss matters of personnel. I wanted to just, this past weekend was the Fall Fest and Halloween Parade. I just want to give a big thank you to Mayor Schwartzwalder, to Sarah Ansel, to Shay Wilson, Greg Baty, all of the departments, fire, police, DPW, all were involved, whether it be lighting the, the tents down there, the, you know, the booths, escorting kids, setting up, tearing down, all of that. So it was a, a successful event and grateful for all the work from folks who contributed to that. We also did have our first regional police meeting. The, kind of the big news of that was the, the name of, was the Swissville Braddock Hills Regional Police Department was what was agreed upon. So that they, those meetings will be open to the public. They are going to be alternating between the Evan Street Borough Building as well as Braddock Hills Borough Building on the, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Baty, but second Mondays of the month. Is that correct?
That's correct. But just to clarify, they will be at the Braddock Hills Senior Center.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
It was mentioned at the Braddock Hills building, but when Ms. Sorrentino sent me the information on it, she listed the address of the senior center at 2749 Columbia Avenue is where they will be held.
So that's the one right at the corner of Columbia and Britton Road. So the, the November, I believe. uh November, I believe it's the eleventh, I mean, or tenth, tenth, November tenth will be the next one. That will be at Braddock Hills. And so then December will be uh here in Swissville. Uh so that, again, six o'clock on the second Monday of the month. Um la- lastly, I think this is, oh no, I have two more things. Um so just, we are in the holiday spirit. Trick or treating is this Friday. Uh it it's going to be six to eight P M. Should have pretty good weather. I know there's a storm coming through. We should expect some rain tomorrow, but um I'm hoping that we're gonna have a clear evening on Friday for our kids. Uh just a reminder that McClure Avenue will be blocked off, so uh there will be no traffic. I every year have to yell at somebody for trying to move the barricades and drive down and they say, I just need to get there. It will park here on Church Street or on Menno Street and you can walk. Uh lastly, um uh I also received an email from the library. Uh Kate Caluccio sent me an email today that she asked me to read on her behalf to council. She said, dear Swissville Council members, it was a very welcome surprise for me to open mail from Swissville Borough and discover a donation of six thousand five hundred dollars. Phase one is about half complete and we're focusing on completing the fundraising for phase two. Your gift is a welcome addition to what we already have. Just imagine the library restored and able to be visited by everyone in our communities. You will have a resource in Swissville to be even more proud of and one that will attract more residents and families to our two communities of Swissville and Rankin. Thank you for your ongoing partnership, support and well wishes, Kate Caluccio and library staff. So I wanted to share that. She is very grateful for the the donations from the council discretionary that were allocated uh last month's meeting. I think that's all that I have. We'll go ahead and move on to ten F, which is the solicitor's report, Mr. McTiernan.
Uh Mr. President, I have nothing to add to the agenda this evening. I know we have an executive session for some personnel issues.
Great. Any other new business that anyone needs to bring up?
Uh one thing I wanted to mention, um and and I'm not sure if this would have to be an ordinance, if it's just something that could be agreed upon with uh council. I had reached out to Mr. Bachi earlier tonight to see how much of our ARPA discretionary funds were still either unallocated or un- uh unused at this point. And I was with with what is currently happening at the federal level, effective November first with SNAP benefits. I was wondering if anyone on council would be amenable to putting a freeze on the spending of our discretionary funds and withholding those funds um in escrow or or in in the account where they are now um to assist our institutions here in Swissville if they do need financial support during this time that SNAP is not available. I um, you know, I I just, I I I want there to, if the federal government is failing us in that area, if there's something we can do as a municipal government to help our residents that are food insecure. Um I'm just trying to think of some way we can do that without carving it out of the budget elsewhere. So I don't know if it would be a volunteer thing, people saying, yeah, I'll withhold so much money. Um but I know I'm out of money or I had passed my money on, so I just wanted to at least float that. Um and it was something I just thought of today, so that's why it's it's not a formal agenda item. But just wanted to toss that out there as November first is going to be coming soon and and those benefits will be cut off.
Any thoughts for Mr. Mizr's uh proposal or or what he brought up?
Um I I think the idea is nice, but I'm not quite sure what that actually means. Um like, how are we going to benefit? Like, how are we actually going to help residents? It it's just like, there's, there's no actual avenue if we're withholding, if we're not um allocating these funds, like what are we going to do with them specifically? Um we've donated, donated a significant amount to the food pantry. Um that is only open two days a month. Um and is I think opening the food pantry more is the issue. Um and we have a call into the Pittsburgh food pantry, whoever runs it all, to find out how we can open that up more, um whether it's volunteers, because I assume that it's not a money issue. Um but
But yeah.
I guess I'm just not understanding what you.
Yeah, just just to, just to, yeah, clarify, it it was more of a pause on the spending, whereas if either, you know, we have obviously the food pantry. I believe there's some local churches here in Swissville that also have food banks. If they would be running low on food and need funds to purchase more food, that those funds would be available for that. Um not just, it it wouldn't be something where residents would come directly to the borough like that. We're not going to operate anything, but it's more if because of the extraordinary need that may transpire here in the next month. Um if if those resources in our community were low on food, um that we would have some funds available to support the purchasing of food for our residents. That that was.
I guess there would be like an application process from these organizations to get funds?
I mean, it, you know, it's it's a fluid situation. Um and and obviously, like I said, I hope we don't have, you know, that we wouldn't have that situation where either of our, you know, any of our institutions here in the borough would say, hey, we we're out of food for distribution for this week. Sorry, you know, and and still have people in line. Um which which is happening in in other areas around the country even before this ending of SNAP benefits. Um like I said, I was just trying to think of ways that we as a borough um can support our residents if things would get to that level. And and that's why I said this isn't like a we're gonna pull all the funds back or do anything like that, just a pause in spending in case things would pivot. You know, in the next month and we would find out, wow, you know, for the month of December, especially as the holidays are coming, there's not enough food to go around. Can we allocate some funds for that? You know, and and obviously, if 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 the budget, if the government reopens in two weeks and everything's fine, this is a null point altogether. It's it's not, it's it's more of a kind of emergency contingency, emergency contingency. I think that's right.
I have a quick question. Uh I think it's more so, did we ever find out about our status for Welcome to America with the county, if we're able to do that yet?
We did not.
We didn't, okay.
No, it's on my long list to do, so I'll get, I'll get you an answer at some point.
Because maybe even for that, if we could, you know, hold on that, and I think I put three thousand towards that, maybe that's even just a start of a fund, just in case.
And even hold a thousand for the basketball court, just to see, you know what I mean? Because we don't know with the food pantries, um how quickly, if an event that SNAP benefits don't actually hit, how quickly that money, that food is gonna go. And I understand what you're saying, Josh, um just in the event of, because we don't know how many families this is going to start needing to feed and of above and beyond the normal groups of people that use these services, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
Let me say, I'll just say it this way, I will bring a nice bow onto this, so we can move on, because I know we're just another new business. If there are any members of council who are interested in temporarily allocating their funds for this purpose to supporting either the food, you know, either food bank or or, you know, the 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 church food banks that we have here.
Young Baptist, I think they have one.
This city, yeah, just in sitting those funds aside, I can even write up the formal proposal that we could then vote on, you know, to allocate those funds at least temporarily. And obviously, the contingency would be when the government reopens. If the government reopens and the funds haven't been used, they go back to their previous earmarked purpose.
I say for me, uh the Welcome to America, it'd be that funding can be put on hold for now, seeing that we don't have the answer to the question with the county as well as that's something we can apply to at almost any time. I think that would, uh that's something I'd be willing to do, Josh.
Here here's what I'll suggest. I like Mr. Mizr's suggestion. If there are individual council members that have allocated things and you wanna, again, it's it's not, it's a temporary hold. Um maybe it's not used, maybe only a portion of it is is used and then can revert back to whatever the original plan was. But there is also other funds that have been approved in the past that are just kind of sitting uh that are not um I mean, for instance, Miss Scales and Mr. Price, and again, I'm not advocating that we just necessarily touch those. But I'd like, I think it's important to inventory to see what is outstanding on there. For instance, I know one of Miss Scales was sidewalks along Mananga Hala. Um I think it was like ten thousand dollars put into that. Um I I think that might be another source for us at least just to look at and research. Um because there are funds that are not represented by faces at this meeting. Um that also could be something that we could look into um uh to to uh yeah, as you consider this.
Yeah, I just know there's not much fluidity uh in our in our overall budget. Um and I would really hate to see if we do run into an issue where any of our local resources that serve the community would not have the resources they need to to serve the need in this situation. Um it, I would just feel, I I would feel better knowing that we as a municipal government are doing what we can to support our local residents through this. Um which I know, I know we all care about and we all do, but this is kind of a um
Racist.
concrete thing saying, hey, there are funds here. If food is scarce for these resources in our in our community, we will help provide that food. Um I I just, I I fully, you know, I fully support everything we've been using our funds for, everything we've approved. I think it's great. Um I just think this is a need we need to take very seriously. And and I hope we don't have to use it, you know, I real, I truly do, but um if that need would come about, I just would like us to have some sort of resource to assist.
Well, Mr. Mizr, it's a very compassionate plea uh and proposal. Um I think let's put it on the agenda. You can do some that way it's at least on there, uh and we can always decide a week from now whether or not we want to go forward with that. Um but that way we don't have to wait until December um to do that and or we could always table it until December uh if we need more information and whatnot, so. Uh thank you for bringing that up and um we'll just, I'll I'll leave it on you for some of the the in-between work uh and give us a week to think about it. Sound good? Thank you. Any other new business? I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn at eight thirteen P M.
Motion to adjourn, eight thirteen P M.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening. Council, please stick around for our